Call the May 13, 2014 Regular Meeting of the School Board of St. Lucie County to order. And a warm welcome to all of you that are joining us tonight, whether it be here in our audience or over the TV. We're glad you're here with us tonight. It's an exciting night. We have a lot of awards to give out tonight and a lot of congratulations. So if you would, please stand with me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Kidset Hunter Pledge.
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am permitted to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
And now we have a real treat tonight. The St. Lucie West Centennial High School Choir is here to entertain us, and I'll invite my fellow board members to join me up front.
We are the St. Lucie West Centennial Vocal Ensemble. Tonight, we will be performing "Over the Rainbow," arranged by Andy Beck, and "Run to You," arranged by Petatonix, featuring our a cappella group, Vavachi, featuring Elise Sanablou and Keegan Maffiori.
a lifetime. Somewhere over the rainbow, skies are blue, there are dreams that you dare to dream of. Somewhere over the rainbow, someday I'll wish upon a star and wake up where the clouds are far behind. Where troubles melt like lemon drops, high above the chimney tops. Goes where you'll find me. Somewhere over the rainbow, bluebirds fly. Over the rainbow, wide and bright and tight. Tried, it was true, as your glance met my stare. But your heart drifted off, like the land split by sea. I tried to go, to follow, to kneel down at your feet. I'll run, I'll run, I'll run, run to you. I'll run, I'll run, I'll run, run to you. I've been settling scores, I've been fighting so long, but I've lost your war and our kingdom is gone. How shall I win back your heart, which was mine? I have broken bones and tethered clothes I've run out of time. I'll run, I'll run, I'll run, run to you. I'll run, I'll run, I'll run, run to you. I will break down the gates of heaven, a thousand angels stand waiting for me. Oh, take my heart, I'll lay it down, my way that bound, praise my shout, just to set I'll run, I'll run, I'll run, run to you. I'll run, I'll run, I'll run, run to you.
Thank you so much. Could I have all of you join back up here again? It is such a pleasure for us to have you here with us tonight, and I'm going to pick on a couple of you. How many of you are seniors? Okay, I'll start down here. You look like you were thoroughly enjoying playing your instrument. Tell us, how has this being in this ensemble helped prepare you for what comes after graduation?
It's definitely showed me how to work with others a little bit better, and it definitely brought a sense of feeling the music to me personally.
Great. Do you plan to continue studying the arts as you go on?
I do not.
Gave you a good foundation, though. Right. Other seniors? Yes, yes. And how has being in this ensemble helped and impacted you during your high school career?
It definitely gave me a sense of family. Coming in freshman year from middle school, I really didn't really know who I was as a person, and joining the arts, definitely, especially the arts department, it really sort of gave me a sense of belonging and sort of steered me in a direction of a career and where I want to go as well with my vocal ensemble family.
Speak about that career a little bit.
I definitely want to become a music major, hopefully do what my director does and direct future kids who wish to join chorus.
Back here in St. Lucie County, right?
Oh, of course.
Good, good, good. Seniors down here? Yes, sir. How has it impacted you?
Well, for me, the arts have just gave me the sense of discipline and showed me how to work well with others and just instilled within me a lot of the values that I can apply in so many different parts of my life. And I think without it, I wouldn't be the person that I am today, so.
Fabulous testimonies, fabulous testimonies. Shows the arts are alive and well in St. Lucie County and will continue to be so. Ms. Lyons, would you join us up here as well? I underst- Is my understanding correct that you're going to retire?
Fortunately so. Yes, I am. I'm going to really miss these kids. I've taught some of them since sixth grade and now seniors, juniors, and I'm going to miss it.
Well, it's clear from the applause you received from them as you walked up here, plus their testimonies, what an impact you've had on their lives. So if all of us could please show Ms. Lyons our appreciation for her years of service and plen- Do we have any parents, relatives, family, friends in the audience of any of our students? Oh, in the back. Thank you for sharing. Well, students, once again, thank you so, so much, and hope you have a fabulous summer. And those of you that are graduating, I look forward to seeing you on the stage in a couple of weeks, and then look forward to hearing back from you as you go and pursue your careers. Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing and invite our superintendent to give her recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the board adopt the proposed amendments to School Board Policy 5.33 as presented.
This is a public hearing, so if there are any in our audience that wish to speak and address this particular item, now would be the time for you to do so. Okay, seeing none come forward, board members, we have received the recommendation from the superintendent. Do I hear a motion? Moved by Dr. Mills, second by Ms. Hilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And let me take this opportunity to remind any of you in the audience that might wish to be an unscheduled speaker before us tonight. There are forms in the back of the room that you just need to fill out and get up to Mrs. Harrison before we begin the business portion of our meeting. And now, one of our favorite times, Madam Superintendent, our special orders of business.
Absolutely. And we'll begin with our state science fair participants and winners. So Assistant Superintendent Carrie Patrick will introduce our science fair winners, and if you'll join me on the floor.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Yost. This is indeed an evening of academic celebrations and recognition of academic excellence in St. Lucie Public Schools as we continue to navigate to greater depths and move to our quality education for students. Recently, hundreds of students participated in our regional STEM Science Fair held in St. Lucie County. STEM, which is education that includes every field under the umbrella of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and with this evening's performance, I must say that A for Arts, making it steam, is something we are striving for. Everything from chemistry to physics, software design, to trigonometry are also included. From this academic showcase, individuals were identified and provided with an opportunity to participate in the 59th Annual State Science Fair that was held in Lakeland, Florida. Through the continued partnerships with the Education Foundation, HMH, and many of our local benefactors, our students participated and made quite an impact on the continuum of categories that ranged from zoology to biochemistry. In fact, three of the 14 students that participated in the state science fair are right now participating at the International Science Fair being held in Los Angeles, California. One of these three international participants is Robert Bacchus, a student from Lincoln Park Academy, who is right now sharing his research on cancer. I bring Robert to your attention because in an unprecedented invitation, Robert was asked to be a speaker at our state science fair. And quite frankly, I can think of no better way to share the value of STEM education through the inspiring words of our very own student. So ladies and gentlemen, if you would please turn your attention to the screens and please listen to Robert's very brief but poignant address.
Good evening. I am so honored to be presenting while I am opening an inspiring message about my experiences in and out of science fair. But first, let me take a selfie. Smile. Really, it's the people who are probably unaware of the face of science. And even today, there are so many that are cognizant of the advancements that are being made each day and of the young, rising science stars such as those in this very room who are working to transform our world. But we have the potential to change just that, thanks to one incredible social invention, the selfie. For those of my audience members whom are unaware, the selfie is essentially a self-portrait typically captured with a handheld phone. And recently, it's gained incredible notoriety. At the 86th Academy Awards, an epic selfie orchestrated by Ellen DeGeneres shut down a Twitter server after receiving a record-setting number of retweets. Even just recently, I jokingly took a selfie with Congressman Patrick Murphy, and to my surprise, it was plastered on the front page of my local newspaper and shared all over my Facebook community. When I immigrated from Jamaica in 2003, I had never even heard of the words "science fair." And even today, as I describe my experiences meeting Nobel Laureates at the International Science Fair and discussing my research with politicians and university professors, most of my friends still think "science fair" is just a convocation of nerves. And while we are admittedly nerdy, we're charismatic, we're energetic, and we're ambitious, and it's time the world knew that. After I turned to Phoenix, I sent last year, I posted a selfie of myself posing with my friends from Germany, Brazil, and Ohio, forming the word "yolo" with our bodies. And so many middle-schooler and high-school students messaged me with their excitement about attending the state and international science fair to meet a diverse body of thinkers. And that's essentially what science fair is about. And so I implore each of you today to harness the power of the selfie. Through the selfie, ambitious scientists like yourself have the potential to grab the world's attention and popularize the face of science. For too long, our generation has been depicted as narcissistic, vain, and self-obsessed. And that's mainly because a few misbehaving selfies are made to represent the bulk of our youth. But today, we can make it so that the students making advancements in bio-medicine, sustainability, and the physical sciences become trending topics on Twitter and get thousands of likes and shares on Facebook. And the examples that I presented to you are a testament to the fact that so many people, thousands if not millions, get excited and are willing to support and share selfies for the sake of a simple picture. And so, again, I implore each of you today to take out your front camera, snap that picture, and show your experiences in the lab, in the field, or even at SF. Each of your projects and their respective applications contributes to the world in an entirely unique way, and it's important that people know that. So take your selfie and let the world know that Florida's youth are formidable force, ready to transform the world, one scientific selfie at a time. Thank you.
Quite an amazing young gentleman and an example of the quality education and the students that we produce in St. Lucie. Robert was also recently named as the 2014 Gates Millennium Scholar. This is a highly prestigious scholarship award funded by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and it will cover Robert's expenses for his undergraduate work, his master's degree, and any other graduate studies that he pursues. Robert was among 1,000 students chosen from the pool of over 52,000 students, making this year's decision one of the most competitive in the program's history. So at this time, I would like to have Mr. Paul Reeve come up with me, and he served as St. Lucie County's Science Fair Coordinator. He is going to call the students' names who participated in this year's state science fair while Mrs. Yost and Ms. Hawley present them with their plaque. And I would also like to recognize the fact that Ms. Misty Evans, who is from Lincoln Park Academy, chaperoned our students to the state science fair, and at this time, Mrs. Sharon Gerhart, who is from Oakhamock, is currently chaperoning our students in Los Angeles. Most importantly, I would like to thank our parents who do partner with us every day to make certain that we do provide the most high education to our students. And so if you would please stand, parents who are here for science fair award winners.
Okay, so it's time to let our students shine. Mr. Reeve?
Stephanie Fisher is in Los Angeles. Mr. Cox, please accept this award on her behalf. Luke Holger is not here. Haucho Rao, Ms. Dampier? Zoe Barbour, Mrs. Pick, if you would accept it, please. She's in LA.
Savannah is also from Lincoln Park Academy, so Ms. Dampier, thank you. Science Fair, just as a reference, we have Zoe Barbour, Stephanie Fisher, and Robert Bacchus. And so, students who are standing that would like to join the group, please feel free That was quite an impressive group of future leaders, innovators, and I know that we've got several students who have many, many more years to participate in our local, state, and international science fair competitions, so we look forward to seeing you next year
And after Robert's introduction, I expected one from the group to come up and take a selfie themselves, but we had plenty parents taking photos, so thank you. Our next special order of business is the Commissioner's 29th Academic Challenge Team Recognition, and once again, presenting is Assistant Superintendent Carrie Patrick.
The Commissioner's Academic Challenge is an academic statewide high school tournament that was inaugurated in 1986. It is designed to provide a prestigious academic arena in which our Florida's academically talented high school students have a chance to shine. Teams from around the state come together to compete in a very inspiring demonstration of academic astuteness and teamwork. Players are challenged with questions from areas of language arts, mathematics, science, social studies, the fine arts, world languages, and technology. Districts may send one team consisting of six high school students and one coach. St. Lucie County selects its team each year from a local academic challenge, which is coordinated by Mr. Terry Morgan. This year's team is made up of members from several of our high schools and was coached by Mr. David Wallman, who is a dean and an academic A-team coach at Lincoln Park. Mr. Morgan, if you'll please join me at the podium, he will call the names of our spectacular students, and Superintendent Yost and Ms. Hawley will be sharing the plaques with them. This year's plaques are certificates- This year's plaques are certificates of achievement, and it's an achievement for placing second in the state for this 29th Annual Commissioner's Academic Challenge. Congratulations to our students, their teachers, and to their parents. Mr. Morgan?
All right, we'll start off with Jeffrey Zine from LPA. William Barr from Treasure Coast High School. Nicole Moner, also from Treasure Coast High School. Jeremy Johnson from Westwood High School. Lauren Herb from Westwood High School as well. And Stephanie Fisher from St. Lucie West Centennial High School.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick, and congratulations again to our students and their families. Next special order of business is the Train Presentation of Energy Efficiency: The Leader Award, and we'd like to call the podium Executive Director, Mr. Marty Sanders.
Good evening. Before I bring Train up, I want to be able to tell, give a little background on how the district received this award, and it was a long-term effort. Over the past five to six years, we've developed an energy advisory team that has worked on energy conservation, energy savings, sustainability, all of those efforts that we hear about, about being green. And our district took a different approach. We did not assume to have all the answers. Through the superintendent, the board's blessing, we created the energy advisory team, and we have a group of engineers, vendors, manufacturers of energy equipment, utility companies, all come together to develop strategies for energy management, energy savings, and sustainability. With us tonight, we have quite a few of the members, and I'll just recognize them. First, we have James Aubrey with FPNL, Mark Johnson with CalMac, Sean Murray, the school board's energy manager, John Gillette, Joe Piper, Amir from OCI Mechanical Engineers. Through these long-term efforts, and again, with the board's blessing, we've been able to develop strategies. This year, our energy cost for electricity is about $5 million less than our baseline of 2008. That's, if you put it in terms of teachers, about 100 teacher jobs. Over our course of these strategies, we've saved over $10 million, and those savings are continuing to be sustained. And it's through these efforts, and specifically with our thermal energy plants or ice plants, Train kicked off a, what they called their accelerator tour. They brought their equipment and practices to about 70 different cities in the United States to share these practices, and they kicked it off in Miami and started with this award to the St. Lucie County School District. So with that, I'll bring up Fernando Lago Messino with Train. He is the South Florida, the district general manager for Train that oversees all of Florida.
First of all, I'm honored to be here and appreciate the opportunity to present this unique award. You know, as I heard Marty talking, I'm thinking 10, 14 years ago, I'm at the Chamber of Commerce in Day County, I'm listening to Merritt Sterheim, who happened to be the superintendent of Day County Public Schools, pretty big school system, and he's talking about how his job, and he's talking to the business community, and he's talking about how his job is to open the schools, make sure they're safe, bus the children, make sure the teachers are paid correctly, that they're doing stuff like we've witnessed here, and that that's his job, and that the job of business is to find opportunities to partner with him and with his staff to look for ways to improve the schools. And I think that with your support and through the superintendent, you guys have done an unbelievable job in saving all that money and sustainable, doing it through sustainability. You know, I'm a product of public schools, all right? I went to a public school system, I went to Miami-Dade Community College, I went to University of Florida, and it's just wonderful to see, and I know it's not easy, and I know it's really not easy to empower folks and to let folks do what your folks here in St. Lucie have done. You know, I'm often, when I talk to young people or potential hires, I tell them that I think there's five key traits that successful people have, right? And so, the first one is you've got to work hard for what you want to do. Second thing is you've got to figure out what you like to do, because if you're going to work hard and long hours, you better like what you're doing. The third thing is to take chances, to take chances in expanding your horizons and trying to look at different ways of doing the deal and, or expanding your horizons in the things that you like to do, because only like that can you expand your knowledge. The fourth one is you've got to learn something new every day. You know, in my world, it could be a glass of wine, but it could be anything, but make sure that your mind is always thinking. And the fifth one is probably the hardest one in my mind, and that is learn to give back, because when you give back is when you know how far you've come. I think that this energy advisory team, if I think of those five traits, they've really done a great job of doing that, and I can tell you that other school systems in the state are looking to these guys and trying to figure out how they can duplicate what you've been able to do here. So, on behalf of my team, and I'll just introduce them very briefly, Vera Stoller is my marketing manager for the state of Florida. I handle the state of Florida, by the way, for Train Commercial, and it's 436 families across the state, that's what we do. Mark Johnson, he's the sales manager for Kymac Ice Tanks, he's one of the partners. James Assosa is the account executive for St. Lucie Schools, and then Chris Colling is our systems engineer that deals with your staff day in and day out, and I think they've done a terrific job. So it's my pleasure, Marty, if you stand here and I'll read it, what it says. It's the Train Energy Efficiency Leader Award is presented to St. Lucie County School District for Environmental Sustainability, Energy and Operational Efficiency, April 2014. Train, congratulations. Sure, and, yeah, you guys want to take a photo? Not a selfie.
Thank you. What a wonderful accomplishment, and we will continue to maintain such energy-efficient costs within St. Lucie County. Our next order of business is the Special Thanks and Recognition Star Award. Mrs. Jerker?
Good evening, Chairman Hawley, board members, Superintendent Yost. Tonight, we're going to recognize several individuals that have really stepped out and helped not only students but also affected the community. And April, Westgate K-8 sponsored the Second Annual Treasure Coast Community Walk for Autism Speaks. We've had several people actually want to get these individuals recognized, and one specifically is Ms. Hawley, but I would like, I'm sorry, not Ms. Hawley, Ms. Hilson, but I'd like to read an email that was sent by Mr. Bill Tomlinson, and he says, "Thank you and your staff for organizing and coordinating such a wonderful, worthwhile event for our community. The work of Valentina White, Cheryl Petrino, Jessica McLaughlin, Shakuida Merrillis, Lisa Landis, and Kathleen Monte, along with so many others, was remarkable. The turnout for the community to support such a worthwhile and important event was phenomenal, and I'm so impressed with the great amount of work, the amount of time, effort, and the energy that each one of these individuals put into organizing such a huge event. You have a fantastic staff," and what staff he's speaking of is at Westgate K-8, "and the parents know that their children are in a great hands each and every day, and that they are getting quality educational programs. My hat goes off to these ladies and the entire Westgate K-8 team. Congratulations and job well done." Could I please have Ms. Valentina White, Cheryl Petrino, Jessica McLaughlin, Shakuida Merrillis, Lisa Landis, and Kathleen Monte? Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that, Mr. Cramner, we really appreciate if you can take these ladies out to lunch on us to Outback.
At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Vanessa Tillman to the podium. Welcome, glad you're with us tonight to bring the CTA report.
Well, as I traveled to several schools today, I was reminded that we have, I guess, 16 more days in school. They were smiling, this is all, is, you know, we've come a long way. As we look at the challenges we've had this school year and accomplishments that we have made and the strides and mending of broken hearts, for lack of a better word, as we continue to do that, we look forward to our coming school year, knowing that we're just a few days away, hoping that everybody will be safe, exams will be done, and we will embrace whatever those legislative actions that we have been legislated to do, mandated to do, whatever term we want to use, knowing that some of those things are unfunded mandates, but we will continue to work toward meeting those mandates that we have been given from our legislators, knowing that this is an election year, so I really would like to encourage those people who may not be registered voters to go and get registered, because every voice counts. Don't sit home and not be a part of making a difference in our community. This morning, I was afforded an opportunity to go to one of our schools, that we did some readings, some storytelling, and it was so good to see so many community folks. As a matter of fact, several of you all were there, and it was just a joy to see students be so excited about putting what I call books on parade, that they were able to have their own books with stories that they were able to share. One of the rooms I went to, I'd be remiss if I not say, the little girl was in pink, she says, "You know who I am? I'm Pinkalicious." That's okay, Pinkalicious, that's good. So it was, they were just so excited that they had guests and somebody to come and to just give them a little of their time, I think. That has been the highlight of my day, to just look and think, we do make a difference in the lives of so many children. They are our future, and I will say over and over again, we have to invest in them, because as we mature ourselves, we're going to have to look for the finest facility for home health care, whatever it is, because sadly but true, I don't think they're going to let us stay with them, okay? So we have to make an investment in them, we have to make sure that they are receiving the very best. And as we looked at our young people tonight who sang, I mean, acapella, I mean, that's something you don't even hear or see anymore. They were so in tune, and also just to listen to the comments of what has made a difference in their lives. I was just so excited that they are sharing their story. And then later on, I attended a focus group that we're having here in the district that deals with professional development, and people feeling good to say, "I have a voice." I enjoy meeting with my peers across the district to share my stories, to find out what the best practices are. Having that time that they have been afforded has something, I say, you can't put a price tag on what they are saying, they have enjoyed having the opportunity to work with their cohorts across the district, across the schools, and looking for some level of consistency as anything is delivered, especially when it comes to professional development, how we look at our evaluation system, they're saying, "We want consistency, not only with ourselves, we want consistency with administrators, understanding the same thing." So, as a person goes from one school to the next, there is consistency. And I just say hats off, that we're having those conversations now before school begins, so that people can continue to share how they feel about the professional development, the idea of having a voice, and that's something we've said over and over again, people want to be able to tell their story. And the first session was good that I attended. I know there will be others tomorrow, I will probably be in and out, but I think that's an excellent initiative that we've been able to do. And of course, we know our new teachers will be coming, because some will be leaving, but I can't encourage enough, if we have people who are salvageable, who we can work with, and continue them on a professional pattern, I think we've invested in them, so we owe it not only to them, but we owe it to ourselves that have... So we owe it not only to them, but we owe it to ourselves that if we have invested a level of knowledge, we are able to recruit what we've given to people so that he or she can be successful. Because there's not only a science to art, to teaching, there's also an art. So how we help develop those persons, all I can say, as President of St. Lucie County Classroom Teachers Association Classified Unit, we're here to be a part of making a difference in the lives of not only our teachers, but our support staff too. And we will continue those endeavors as we go to our next school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Is there anyone here from CWA? See anyone? We will then move to our consent agenda. Board members, we have the agenda before us. I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Moved by Ms. Hensley, second by Mr. Ingersoll, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. At this time, Board members, are there any conflicts that you need to declare before we proceed on any item that will be coming before us? Hearing none, we will receive the recommendation. Madam Superintendent?
I recommend the Board approve a total of 45 consent agenda items, beginning with 8.1 and ending with 19.1 as presented.
Board members, we've received the recommendation. Are there any items that you wish to comment upon? Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes ma'am, 10.7 through 10.9. I finally came up with an epiphany.
So you wish to comment on those items?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Madam Chair, Ms. Hilsen?
Comment only on 10 and 11.
Comment only. Okay, any items that you wish to pull for separate vote and separate discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Ingersoll, we will entertain your comments.
Just following up with Mrs. Tillman and PD. If me and my son went to go golfing and we only used the putter throughout the whole course, it'd be ineffective. And if we only have one or two people that are consultants for the whole district, I think we'd be more, more effective if we had a variety of consultants from principals to pick from. Each school has different needs and as you're on the drive, you don't want to use a putter. If you're chipping, you don't want to use a putter. So each school has a different component in which they need a consultant for. And sort of like the state, the state has a list of books where kids can read. I would somewhat like the district to compile the list of consultants that would be available for principals to be able to use, rather than just seeing the same three come along. If we could research someone within the four county area that could do time management and could bring in areas in which teachers could use a little bit more help or principals. And that was finally my thought of the day.
We appreciate you sharing it with us. Ms. Hilsen, your comments?
Excuse me. Consent agenda business services purchasing for our viewers at home. This has to do with portable classroom and modular relocation services. And it's just a comment that I think comes up so often with the school board that we may not get enough vendors. And in this one, it just struck me, we had nine vendors that were solicited and one vendor replied. So we do everything by the state statute in the way that we do hire organizations and companies. But this shows you, and I see this over and over again, that one vendor replied. So sometimes we're kind of stuck on the purchasing piece. And then item 11 is Beginning Teacher Induction Program I-3 Development Grant. And one of our targets, I know with the superintendent that we talked about, was teacher retention and development. And this is a considerably large grant, a three-year grant to go forward specifically designed to assist new teachers in the development and evaluation so forth. So I'm very happy to see this grant and appreciate it.
Okay, we have received the comments and we have the recommendation before us. Do I hear a motion? Moved by Dr. Mills, second by Mr. Ingersoll, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We will move to our other business. Madam Superintendent?
Under Findings of Fact, Conclusions of Law and Penalty and Final Orders Number 361 through 384, I recommend that the Board approve those Findings of Fact, Conclusions of Law and Penalty, and Final Orders for 361 through 384 as presented.
Thank you. Board members, we have a recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Moved by Ms. Hensley.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hilsen, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. An error, okay. Guess we need to run that one through again. Ms. Harrison? Oh, you didn't, I overwrote, okay. Thank you. Okay, Madam Superintendent, time for your report.
Yes ma'am, and there is quite a bit of information to share. There are many positive things occurring throughout the district. First of all, the approval on the consent agenda for three teams to attend Odyssey of the Mind World Competition in Iowa. So thank you for that. Fundraising efforts are currently underway for Morningside Elementary, Lincoln Park Academy, and for Fort Pierce Central High School. Last year, you will remember that Hooton Mifflin Heart Court contributed $9,000 to this event. And that was a single opportunity, a one-time opportunity. So our schools are diligently raising funds at this time to send their teams of five through seven students per school to Iowa. Our Education Foundation of St. Lucie County has established a Fun Day Project account for each of our schools. And so donations from all of us, the Board, employees, and the community are appreciated at this time to get all of our students to their designated spot in Iowa for world competition. Wanted to share a letter from Gertrude Walker, from, who is the Supervisor of Elections. During the month of April, we generally participate in what's known as First Vote Program for our high school students, where we attempt to register students for the very first time, those students who meet the criteria and are age eligible. And so she has certainly commended us on our efforts and the opportunity to collaborate with the Supervisor of Elections and her staff. And she appreciates our activities, including voter registration, student council, homecoming, and prom king and queen elections that have all occurred with the support of the Elections Department. So wanted to share that. As Mrs. Patrick mentioned earlier, STEAM and STEM, including the arts in our science, technology, engineering, and math, are alive and well in St. Lucie County and the public school systems particularly. We had a rap battle at the Sunrise Theater on Friday evening where students had an opportunity to work with a professor and then had less than 24 hours turnaround time to present on the stage. And we had a middle school winner, which was Southern Oaks Middle School. And we had a high school winner, which was Fort Pierce High School. However, honorable mention goes to all of the students that participated. They did a phenomenal job connecting science, technology, math, and engineering to those presentations. And I personally was very thankful that they had the words scrolling across the back of the stage as well. Because as they rapped, I didn't always hear every single word. But if you read them, they were very pertinent to the instruction that occurred that day, as well as in our classrooms daily. There was also a STEM luncheon that was sponsored by the Gulfstream Girl Scouts that recognized four of our women within the community for their connection to science, technology, engineering, and math. And so that was outstanding, as well as tonight's recognition of our state science fair winners. We're hoping that our writing results will come in in the next couple of weeks, along with our Grade III FCAT results. And so we're anticipating the release of those scores and hope that they will arrive sooner versus later as we plan for summer opportunities, as well as congratulate our students on a job well done. Today, we had learning lunches and it was a pleasure to meet students from seven of our schools, along with parents and staff members. So in kindergarten through grade four, we had representation from Windmill Point, Oak Hammock, FK Suite, Weatherby, and Lakewood Park Elementary. And we also had two eighth graders in attendance from Southport Middle School and Dan McCarty. I know as the end of the year approaches, it becomes more and more difficult to release students and staff for this purpose. And we greatly appreciate the candid responses from our young people, as well as the adults that were in attendance today. Also, want to give a shout out to Mrs. Duane's class at Village Green Elementary where I had the opportunity to read today. They did a phenomenal job. And we're looking forward to Field Day this afternoon. So that was fun, as many of you had that opportunity as well to read to students at Village Green today for Community Day. And in closing, I was asked to speak with members, your representatives of the Budget Committee today, as they met and took a look at substitute salaries. They are perplexed with where to go next because they'd like a little bit more direction from us as far as whether or not there is a need to recruit additional substitutes for St. Lucie County. I know we have a large pool, many times on Mondays and Fridays, however, or before and after holidays, it is difficult to secure an adequate number of substitutes. They would like to take a look at salaries and whether or not that would enhance individuals of a certain quality to St. Lucie County. And I will be following up with staff at this time to make certain that we research the information that they are requesting and make certain that we bring a report back to you. So your representatives, there were four of the five representatives present today at the meeting. You're being represented well. And that concludes my comments for this evening.
This might be a good time to address the Budget Committee. I think there's been a certain level of frustration from members on that committee, feeling that, not real sure that their input was being heard or being recognized or really served any purpose. So Madam Superintendent, I realize that it is a committee that the Board designates. And I want to continue with that, but I'm thinking that we might need to look at revamping it to maybe include different membership or, I just think there's some areas that we need to look at. So perhaps on one of our work sessions, we might, could address that and get input from Board members that way as to what they're hearing back from their individual members. I did hear from mine today and there was a significant level of frustration. So I don't want the committee to not exist, but it, I do think we need to look at revamping it.
We'll place that on the agenda for May 27th and obtain your input. And as you know, that's governed by school board policy. And then we will modify the policy as appropriate.
That's certainly the direction I, with the rest of you are in agreement, that we need to look at that. Okay? Mr. Harold, do you have a report tonight? Okay, thank you. We'll then move to our Board Member reports and Ms. Hilsen will begin with you tonight. No report, okay? Dr. Mills?
Yes, I do have a report. Before I go into that report, I want to give a happy belated Mother's Day to all of you mothers in our school district, as well as our community, Happy Mother's Day, that just came by last Sunday. And hopefully, you had a wonderful day and those that love you had really showed their appreciation. Want to mention a young man who just was drafted into the NFL. He's one of our very own graduates here in St. Lucie County. I'm sure so many of you know about it, but there may be some out there that don't know. He is a graduate from Westwood High School and his name is Khalif Mack. He was chosen as the fifth person out of 254 graduates to be drafted into the NFL last Thursday night. And we are very proud of that young man. He is also, and actually, all 254 graduated from their universities as well. And so we're very proud of him that he did, he accomplished that task. I know his parents personally, we want to say a shout out of congratulations to Mr. and Mrs. Mack and our community. They've been long-term community members. And also, congratulations to the entire family. And you know, this is just one success story that deals with sports in our schools and how important it is to have quality sports, as well as the arts and these other areas that help our children and inspire them to be motivated to go on with their academics. So that's just one big success story that we could take time out to feel good about, our work in those areas. Also, I attended the mystery dinner at Fort Pierce Central. It was called "The Wedding Song" and they were sold out. To a sold-out audience, the kids were absolutely just professional. That's another area of the arts that we have. We often say it as Board members and to the community, we have so much that you can take part in, in our community. Right here in our public schools, our kids are doing phenomenal jobs in the different areas of the arts, as well as sports. So when you say you have nothing to do, you need to get in contact with us as a district and find out on our calendar, all the great things that we have in the community to offer. Also, the STEM rap battle, I wanted to mention that a little bit. Our Superintendent Janelle Yost gave a very good thorough report on that. But I just wanted to add it to that, that the community came out big as well. Sunrise Theater is a pretty big place and it was just about full of people in the community, parents supporting their children. And out there, I had one parent come to me and she says, "You know, I really don't know what this is all about." She says, "Can you tell me something about, what is this STEM?" And I said, "You've never heard of STEM before?" She said, "No." I said, "Well," and her son had came up, I said, "Well, what about you?" He couldn't even tell me what STEM was and he was part of one of the STEM kids that were competing in rap. But I was able to explain to both the son and the mother what the acronym meant. So that was a learning experience, an educational experience for me and that mom. So it was a wonderful opportunity to help our community know that we, as educators in our district, we really are preparing our children in the area of science, technology, engineering, and of course, mathematics, because that is the future and we want our children well-prepared. Also, Education Foundation Scholarship Night was last Thursday night as well. And our Education Foundation that do so much for our public school system, in fact, that's what they work for, for our teachers and our students. They awarded $74,000 last Thursday evening to 56 public school seniors doing their annual scholarship award achievement. And these students have accomplished so much. It was a great program and many of these students are chosen based on not just their academic, but their need. And many have gone through hardships and challenges. And so it's a wonderful thing to have this type of scholarship and the Educational Foundation here in St. Lucie County. Jim, Mr. McKenzie, you did a fantastic job. Thank you for all your hard labor in raising these funds, along with all of the foundations and the businesses throughout our community. As a Board, we want to say thank you for understanding that we need you to be a part of what we're doing here in the district with our students.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Ingersoll?
No report.
Ms. Hensley?
The only committee report I would have, I guess, would be from Children's Services Council. But mostly, I guess, would be about the Roundtable Steering Committee that we were involved with. The Children's Services Council, Monday night, will be having the event that we do once a year. And we designate two people in the community who work with kids who go way beyond their job description for us, Champions for Children, and also our youth leaders. And it's a very interesting concept to see here, these kids who are recommended from the organizations in which they work, either as volunteers or basically as clients in some cases, get to tell their story. Because it is absolutely amazing what happens with our children in St. Lucie County when we focus on our children. It is astounding. And people- It is astounding, and people who come to that, if they've never been there before, it's like when people came to Village Green this morning, hadn't been in the school before, what they saw, it's like, "Oh my, I had no idea." Uh, so I would encourage you to, uh, if you can, participate. If not, always keep up that energy that makes sure that you are, uh, following children, encouraging children, and advocating for children, because we cannot look outside our own community to be able to do that for us. We have to do that. The Steering Committee, which is, uh, all the Roundtable, met last week with a very large group, diverse group of people to set the future for that organization. Uh, we put the hand-in-hand together, I believe, it was twelve years ago, uh, that has come to the end of the plan. So now the next steps are, what is the next plan? Do we continue the plan we have and expand on it and, uh, tailor it to what we know now, or is there another direction that needs to be, uh, you know, achieved? So it's very interesting to hear the conversations, but to look at the statistics also. While the statistics that were given need a little bit more context, which we will be glad to provide, uh, but the statistics in our community, you've heard me say this many times, belie conventional wisdom. Because of things have been put in place in this community that, as things were going bad economically and unemployment and all that sort of thing, the indicators for our students were still going in the positive direction. We are one of the few places in Florida, probably beyond that, that can say that what we have in place has helped safeguard our kids from some of the financial and some of the political whims that have happened. So I'm very proud of what this community's been able to achieve, and I'm also very proud of what plan they will put together, because I know that their commitment is going to be for taking us forward always with children as a focus.
And keeping that in mind, with children as our focus, I want to mention the Law Day celebration that was held right at the end of April, where many of our students were recognized for their posters and their essays as it relates to law, and how much we appreciate our partnership as a district with that organization and the opportunity every year for our students to really learn about the law and how it impacts their lives at a very, very young age. So, um, Madam Superintendent, appreciate you being there and representing the school district so well, and it was quite an honor to see all of the artwork that was displayed, and look forward to that celebration each year. Uh, this is the time of year when several of the committees are winding down before the summer break, and one of those committees that I serve on is the District Advisory Council, and we had our final meeting of the school year last night. So let me take this opportunity to thank all of you that served on that committee this year, as well as principals and administrators at each of our schools for being sure that you had a representative at the table at our monthly meetings. It was an exciting year for the council, and they had many presentations made to them, great opportunities for discussion, and great opportunity to take facts back to their individual school advisory council. So we look forward to resuming that in the fall. But again, thank you for those of you that participated, especially to all of you schools for being sure the minutes were delivered to the proper person, and when we had to make a date change, you were diligent in being sure your representative was notified. So I appreciate that very much. Another committee that I serve on is the Education and Business Committee through the Chamber of Commerce, and I want to give a special thanks to Alan Cox and Centennial High School. They were our hosts last week for breakfast in their newly opened Eagle's Nest, uh, excuse me, Eagle Cafe, yes. We went to the Eagle's Nest as part of our, which, again, there we go back to the children, that's where they have their kindergarten VPK program, um, and the children were delighted to see so many big people coming into their room, so that, that was the result of my slip. But, um, thank you, Mr. Cox, for making that available to us. Every quarter, we will choose, um, a different school to go and visit, and they serve lunch for, uh, excuse me, serve breakfast to us, and then we take a tour of the school, and it has been really enlightening to our chamber members to be part of that. Can't tell you how many times I hear, "Wow, I had no idea this was going on," or, "Wow, these, these kids will cater for us? You know, I've got a wedding coming up, maybe we..." Um, so getting the community involved, and I, I want to thank the chamber for letting that be possible as well. One of the focuses of that committee in the upcoming year will be a help to our school district as, as we focus on teacher recruitment and retention, and they want to be an active partner with us in that, and we look forward to that coming in the next school year as well. Uh, many of the other things participated in have already been mentioned, so I won't go through those again, but at this point, uh, Ms. Harrison, do we have, I have one unscheduled speaker request that was turned in. Um, is Doty Spence in the audience? Okay, well, at this point, we will bid goodnight to our viewing audience and invite Ms. Spence to the podium.